Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Wednesday, January 4, 2023. Happy New Year, everyone. I have a meeting announcements. All meetings are live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. During our moment of silence, I ask that you keep in your thoughts and prayers Jabbo, who used to work for the city of Pittsburgh, I think it's Councilwoman Gross's district, maybe. Anyway, Jabbo, who recently passed away, our thoughts are with him and his family. I also want to make sure that we mention the chief who passed away this past week, and all the victims and people that were involved in that terrible tragedy the other day, and right outside the city of Pittsburgh. I want to thank our Pittsburgh police officers for responding. I'll save those comments for later, but I do want to say that please keep everyone, everyone's families in your thoughts. And I also want to make sure that I mention the football player, Damar Hamlin. He also is from McKee's Rocks area, which borders our district, and he does a lot in our district, and I just want to keep him in your thoughts and hope, you know, good things come out for him. His kids play for, or his, I'm sorry, his brother plays for Westwood Oakwood Athletic Association that I used to run, so we want to keep the, the whole family is just amazing. So, that said, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Don't move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is amended, and our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one from Councilman Wilson to be presented. Councilman Wilson?
Madam President, we'll have this written into the record, and if...
Went right into the record?
Yeah, possible presentation later.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we read it into the record, please? And can we also read mine into the record, since we're getting to the record? Can we just read them both?
Sure.
It's okay?
Councilman Wilson presents, now therefore be it resolved that the city of, or the council of the city of Pittsburgh does thank Mr. Gabriel Fontana for his half-century of service to the people and commuters of downtown Pittsburgh. Be it further resolved that the council does hereby wish him well in his richly earned retirement and declares Wednesday, January 4, 2023 to be Gabriel Fontana Day here in our city of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, January 5, 2023 to be Reverend Rosemary Seals' Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion, Councilman? Any discussion? Seeing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations are approved, thank you. And that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, please? And the first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President, 2024. I ask this council to re-review the film disclosure, the masculine mystique. By male M, I mean a genetic X-Y individual, and female F, a genetic XX. Concern of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, City Council, and Ghaney is sex/gender SG equity. I view this as femdom rubina hootery. A concern of Pittsburgh Council is that, my concern is anti-equity but pro-equality in existence and pro-justified inequality in experience due to competition. One, if a council Ghaney goal is to achieve greater sex/gen equity, female/male balance, to correct sexist/genderist imbalance, male over female in availability of resources, then why does the city MF taxpayer-funded Gender Equity Commission affirmed by Ms. Gross, Strasburger, Kelsmith, Warwick, show an imbalance, female over male in its composition? I view this as inequity. Second, if a goal is to accelerate sex/gen equilibrium, female counselor to male citizen balance in speech, i.e. to change sexist/genderist distortion, male over female articulation of council, meaning speech, when males in council ignore and overtalk females, voiding civil balance, equality in stating pros and cons, then why has council allowed, without restorative censure, female counselor Deborah Gross overtalking male citizen RLM during his PC, and female citizen Stormy Mira Montez offering contorted, factually wrong, anti-RLM defamatories in her PC? Counselor Gross and citizen Mira Montez are named in RLM depositions in civil rights, freedom of speech, anti-sex/gen equality harassment violations, informal legal U.S. national and international court complaints. Sex harassment is about power, unchosen coercion one over another. Female counselor Gross has done so, in my view, because she views herself as over myself, male citizen in council. Ms. Gross's public council-approved actions are pro-FM over M in the commission interests and interference in PC. Consider a feminine mistake, Leslie Bennett.
Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi? Is she online? Yes. She's online.
Good morning, Teresa.
Good morning, Naomi.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Pennsylvania was one of the 13 colonies that stood against tyranny from England. I assure you that the founding fathers of the United States did not think that the people were childlike mentalities that could not make their own choices. We do not con... ...pointed a panel, elementary school buildings should remain.
Naomi, we're having difficulty, and they think it's on your cellphone. We're having difficulty hearing you. Naomi, if you'll submit your comments to council, we'll make sure that everyone, we share them with everyone. And if you figure out the phone situation, we'll get you back on at the end of the meeting. Or after the next speaker. The next, so we go to our next registered speaker. Is she on? Our next registered speaker is Ikona Hal Makina.
Inma Keala Kein, grand rising to all of you. My title is Ikona Hal Makina. I am the chief and grand inka of the Air Quad Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And before City Council, I would like to share a few thoughts about our nation. Our people have the right to be actively involved in developing and determining programs that affect our bottom line. We have the right to administer such programs through institutions of our own. Cities, states, municipalities shall consult and cooperate in good faith with our people. We also would like for City Council to consider giving us free, informed, and prior consent before giving away our land to nonprofit agencies, specifically the URA. We have the right to get approval. You need approval from us before developing our land, and that's not currently happening. Our people have the right to mitigate adverse ecological, economic, social, cultural, and the spiritual impacts of implementation and development of projects that affect our rights. Indigenous people also have the right to be recognized and respected in our land. We also have the right to have our institutions supported by local, federal, and state governments. As a reminder, we are the Rotunotuni. We are the Onkwe Honkwe. This is our land, and we shall have recognition in our land. El Ukhaan. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Have a good day. That exhausted list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Senator.
I've come today to give praise and honor to our principal up at the Miller African-American School. I'm not pronouncing the name right, but I'll get it. The principal wrote a book, and this is what my grandchildren brought, in his Jazzy's Journey. When I grow up, what can I be? I can be a doctor, a teacher, and maybe an emcee. And in this book, it shows the principal, well, it's her family, she has three children. The reason why I'm bringing this down is because my grandbabies was really excited, and they're excited because they love to go to school. Now, this was a new school for them, and at first they didn't want to go. But the principal, if she's not at the door, then it's the vice principal or a teacher that is welcoming each child as they come, and they make them feel, because my babies, they were, they didn't want to go, and I'm saying, they said, "All my other friends are at the other school." I said, "But you can make good new friends here." And as they walked up, the teacher was, "Oh," and called their names, and we were waiting on you, and you could just see them. They looked like they got taller. At first, they were like down. But in this book, and I would just like to read just a couple things, and this is written by Dr. Margaret J. Starks, S-T-A-R-K-E-S, and it's illustrated by Michael Raglin, and it says, "This book is dedicated to children everywhere. Dare to believe in the beauty of our dreams. You are filled with potential and purpose. Remember that no one can determine your destiny but you. Make all of your dreams come true," and she says to her children. It goes on, look how beautiful this is, the children, the very dark children. A lot of times, you don't see books like this, and the children love it. And I'm saying to the families, if possible, if you want to see this book and want your children to see it, you can call up there and speak to the principal or even the vice principal and ask to see this book. This is something that our children need to see. Now, this is, this is her picture here. Now, also, I wanted to say about Bethesda House Ministry. Up in our building, we have the minister, Dr. Cornell Brunson, and Lady Redd, Redd Brunson. These two have started a church in our building. Now, for Thanksgiving, they said they knew that there were some people that had problems. They had raffle. Two women got $100, $200 apiece, two other women got $100, and I think even $50. Now, for New Years, I went New Years, and they gave us gifts. I just want you to know that they haven't forgotten us. Please, have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you for sharing that. And are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council in the audience? Good morning, Bernadette. Take your time.
You guys are blessed with a two-parter. And Bernadette wouldn't be Bernadette if I didn't give you a lesson today. I had to put my thinking cap on about when I was studying for my CDL. Don't worry, I'm not going to drink. Oh, okay. We're having a lesson today. I love Beachview. I love all the restaurants. I love the grocery store. I frequent them all. It's dangerous up there right now. And a couple months ago, you might remember, I came in here and I told you how a big rig, not a, not a box truck, not a cargo van, a big rig got stuck up at the crest at Coast. I've been asking for the pedestrian crosslights up there because they come up through the stop sign in order to see. They do the same thing at Boested, and they do the same thing at Crosby. So, Beachview drinks a lot, anything, from milk, whatever. Let's pretend this is a truck. Let's say it's a milk truck, any kind of a tanker that has liquid. They put baffles in them. Baffles kind of look like a Belgian waffle thing, but they have holes, and that is to stop the force of the water. So, you have trucks, even if it's a bunch of, one of these, I won't show the name of If they have to stop suddenly, this happens. Multiply that, that whole bunch of these going like this, it can literally pick up a truck and move it in whatever way that liquid's going to go. A whole truck length, double truck length, it can happen. Now, we just had, had the big rig lose its truckload on, on coast. It was bricks. Thank God there was nobody behind them. Monday, a big rig came up to Beachview delivering propane tanks. What if he lost his load at the top of Coast? There was a sign that said, "No trucks." Access showed it to me. I was so excited. Now, it says, "For deliveries only." Coast Avenue is now a truck delivery route, and so is Boested. Boested? They stop quickly? Not good. A friend of mine, it works for the United States government, they won't let him retire. He's a truck driver. He's from Beachview in the Belsuver area. He said to me that he helped a rig at the crest of Coast, and they were in a big rig, and their dollies, the little things that drop down, got stuck on that crest. Now, this is a man moving our United States Army Marines, everybody. He's been in Kuwait, Afghanistan. He's off the Arabian Sea right now. He, he knows what he's talking about. Straight truck, maybe, but he doesn't even agree that would be on, would be for Coast. Folks, somebody's going to get hurt.
Thank you, Bernadette.
And I'll be back this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you to our speakers. Any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we move on to the next order of business, which will be presentation of papers. And can we start with Councilman Ricky Burgess, Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1099, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 3107 to 3111 Brereton Street.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
No new papers.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman. I know you've been very busy this weekend, working with the Public Safety Director. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman. It's good to see you with one paper versus all the others you've been having.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1100, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incurring of Non-Electoral Debt Through the Issuance of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City of Pittsburgh in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $67,680,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1101, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2016 and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill 1102, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2017 and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill 1103, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, December 28, 2017, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2018 and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill 1104, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2019 and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill 1105, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program in year 2020 and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill 1106, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program in year 2021 and authorize subsequent agreements.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one paper. Thank you, Councilman. Or thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill 1108, Ordinance Amending Title II, Article V, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 23703, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayors designate their under the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by City Council to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees their under in accordance with Ordinance 237 Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh, City Code.
Thank you. Who am I calling on, Councilwoman Kraus? Tell me. I see.
Councilmembers Strasburger, Warwick, and Wilson, for presentation of papers.
Did I get you guys for presentation? Did I just call on you? Okay.
Oh, really? Oh, wow. There you go.
You know, you know my memory, so, okay. I wasn't sure that, thank you, though, for, for always keeping me on track. And the next order of business is reports committee for final action. There being no final action, we'll move on to motions and resolutions, the meeting announcements. I have a few meeting announcements, and I'll turn it over to members. Today at 12:30 PM, council will hold an executive session on Bill 1060 as it relates to a warrant. Also, this afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold our standing committees meeting. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 PM. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, January 10, and Wednesday, January 11, at 10 AM, respectively. Speaker registration will close on those days at 9 AM, the day of the meetings. To register to speak at these meetings or hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And now, I'll turn it over to members. Councilman Kraus?
Yep. Thanks, Madam President. Working recently with the Mayor's LGBT QIA Plus Commission, I've received a request to come into council via a post-agenda and to brief council on the work that the commission is doing. And so, I would like to motion for a post-agenda to host the commission at a post-agenda for a briefing at council.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Second.
I'd just like to add that Ricky Moody's also been working with them, and so they had made some similar comments, so I'm glad that you're...
Good.
You know, calling for the post-agenda.
Great.
It'd be interesting to hear what they're up to.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll schedule, get that scheduled, Councilman.
Thanks, Madam President.
Anything else from members? Councilman Burgess?
So, I see that we, that the President has introduced motion to have some form to make sure that community groups and grantees are spending the Stop the Violence Fund appropriately. I'm not in disagreement with that at all. I am also going to say, though, if we're going to start going down this road of reporting, we should also make the police report in the same manner. The police have several funds, including trust funds, that never come before council. And so, if we're going to say that funding, we know, in this, in the Stop the Violence is 7%, 8% of the police budget, the public safety budget is, you know, of the police budget's 90, you know, 90% bigger than this, then we should, we should, if we're going to start having this oversight with community groups, we also should have the same level of oversight of the police and all the funds that they receive that never come before this table.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I just want to say that we are doing that. We are working with all the trust funds. We have our budget office going through the trust funds, working with the mayor's budget folks, and we are trying to put something in place for all the trust funds, number one, and minimize some of the trust funds because there are way too many. And there is too much money going out this door that is not going directly to operations and to things that are, that are under our purview. So, it's not just with this. I've also asked for the same thing, and our solicitor is working on it now. I asked for the same thing with the Pittsburgh Parks Tax. I asked for the same thing with the new art funding that we're putting in place. And anytime we're putting in funding and giving it to somebody outside of the city of Pittsburgh who is not necessarily somebody that, that works directly for the city of Pittsburgh, I'm going to ask for some oversight of those dollars. That's our responsibility. And although we have a controller who can do it, we also have a controller that's also short-staffed, so we're trying to figure out a way, and we will work with you, Councilman Lavelle, and the administration. I already talked to the director. And Councilman Kraus, since you're Chair, that can... and Councilman Kraus, since you're chair of that committee, about ways that we can make this a report that's beneficial in getting actually yielding results. I don't care who gets the money. I care that we get results. And I want to make sure that we're not just giving money out to people who aren't yielding results for the public. Right now, with the crime as high as it is and violence increasing in the city of Pittsburgh, it's our responsibility to make sure every dime we spend is going towards reducing those violent crimes. Anything else from members? Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I just wanted to say just quickly, so the grantees for the Neighborhood Economic Development Grants came out just recently, and I just wanted to sort of state for the record that on that committee at the time, and I understand this was just sort of the situation at hand, but there was no representation for District Five in the, you know, allotting of those grants, and that at least two, I haven't looked at it in detail, but at least two Hazelwood organizations that, you know, fully qualified for the grants did not get grants. So, and I understand that this is essentially a done deal. And, I mean, again, but I just wanted to sort of state that for the record when it comes to future monies that this body allocates, is just to remember that in, you know, 2022, like, there were organizations in my district that were, you know, not prioritized in that particular grant-making process.
We'll talk to the budget director about that, too, because I'm not sure that we didn't have some input or some conversation. But we'll talk to him about it, you and I, after this.
Yeah.
But thank you for always being an advocate for your community.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else from members? Nothing else from members? Okay. Can I have a minute to approve the minutes? And, excuse, there's no absent members. We have a photo after this. Thank you all for being here. It's so nice to see everyone. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Somewhere.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.